I would like to call, uh, to order the March tenth regular board meeting of the Mounds View School Board. Good evening and welcome. The first order of business is item one dot two, adoption of the agenda. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. The motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will move to item two dot one, student representative reports, and I'd like to welcome Elton from Mounds View. Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, everyone. It is nice to be back for the monthly report from Mounds View. So today I'll be sharing some exciting updates on athletics and clubs and events that have been happening in the past month, few months, or month for Mounds View. Firstly, I want to congratulate our Rams floor hockey team for competing in the state championship today at Highview Middle School. They competed at four thirty P M. I did try to look for the results, but I couldn't find it yet. And we hope to hear some good news about their performance. Our wrestling team, they set a school record with five athletes meddling at the state wrestling tournament. And these are the athletes by their weight class, Brett Swenson, one oh six, placed second. Apollo Ashby, one sixty, placed fourth. Quinn Morgan, uh, one ninety-five, placed third. Uh, Joey Molstein, one eighty-two, placed fourth. And heavyweight J Rock Solheim placed third place, and we're just really proud of our wrestling team. In addition to that, girls' basketball had a thrilling section quarterfinal against Spring Lake Park with junior Bria Stenstrom scoring her one thousand career point. Also, over the weekend, two Mounds View records were broken in the boy swim and dive meet. Uh, Joshua Wallin, Nathan Harry, Stephen Joe, and Justin Wang broke the two hundred medley relay record with a time of one minute and thirty-five seconds, which has been standing since two thousand and seven. And also I want to highlight that senior Joshua Wallin also broke the backstroke record with a time of fifty seconds, fifty point twelve seconds, which was a record standing since twenty eleven, and he earned a All-American consideration recognition. Some other news that I have is science Olympiad won the state competition. We're very proud of them. And they were competing in nationals this May, which is a fantastic achievement. And another thing is we also had our winter bell dance, pet fest, and spirit week in the past week, which was a resounding success. And we want to thank the hard work of the many students who set it up, and given that it was also during the snow days, so it was still a success. And also, many students have already registered for the next fall si- uh, semester, and details of their classes will be going home soon to their parents. And finally, last thing I want to highlight is our best buddies club hosted a Spread the Word to End the Word event last week during our reflect session, where many students and staff took pledge in support of inclusion of all students. And this is a really good, uh, moment for us as everyone was just like in solidarity and almost you kind of feel that community in with our school. All in all, our students continue to excel in various fields, and we're proud of their accomplishments, and we wish them continued success in the future. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I hope you have a great break.
You too.
Thanks. All right, we will move to item two dot two announcements, and Jim is going to read the gifts tonight.
Good evening. Uh, there are eleven gifts for schools and programs received this period for a total of three thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. There were also sixteen gifts received for the Ralph Reader food shelf this period for the total of fifteen thousand nine dollars and fifteen cents. So, uh, it is recommended we accept the gifts and extend thanks to the donors.
Wonderful. Thank you, Jim. Um, upcoming meetings, there will be a work session on Thursday, April sixth at five P M. And the next regular meeting of the school board will be on Tuesday, April eleventh at seven P M, both at the district center. At this time, we will move to agenda item two dot three, superintendent's report.
Well, thank you, Diane. Um, I have several things this evening, but first, uh, I want to lead by, uh, letting you know, uh, last month I had the opportunity, uh, to share that six of our district teachers had been nominated, uh, as candidates for the twenty twenty-three Minnesota Teacher of the Year Award. Today, I'm pleased to let you know that three of those teachers have now been named as semifinalists. Uh, they are Mackenzie Kymick from Mounds View High School, Katie O'Brien from our Bridges program, and Rich Rosavec from Irondale High School. So these three teachers are now among thirty-three semifinalist candidates from across the state. Uh, over the next few weeks, this group is going to be narrowed down to about ten to twelve finalists. And from that group, the teacher of the year is selected and named in early May. So tonight, we wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate, uh, Mackenzie, Kate, uh, Katie, and Rich, and wish them well as they move forward in that, uh, competition. I also want to recognize, uh, Becky Allard from Mounds View High School, our business and marketing teacher. Uh, she recently received the Best Prep Educator of Excellence Award. Becky was selected from over five hundred participating educators and is in a category that recognizes the top two percent of educators for their commitment to Minnesota youth. So congratulations, Becky. Uh, over the last couple of days, I've had the opportunity to visit the annual physics and career fairs at, uh, Irondale and Mounds View. Uh, it is always so much fun when you get the opportunity to go over and interact with the students, see the projects, uh, that they've, they've developed. Their, uh, creativity is just unbelievable. Um, I specifically want to thank all of the staff, the parents, and the community members who really assisted in, in making that happen. There's a lot of work that goes into those projects and just really appreciate the opportunity for the, our students to showcase, uh, all of their talent. I also want to thank the businesses who came to participate as part of the, uh, the career fair. There were a lot of students who were able to visit with them and have some ideas about potential careers, uh, in the future. So, uh, thank you to everyone involved. The participation and hard work is very much appreciated. And finally, uh, just a reminder to the community that both the community education catalog and the latest edition of our school talk are no, both available online electronically. Uh, links can be found on our district website. Uh, registration for summer community education programs oppen, opens on, uh, March twenty-seventh, and I know tonight we're gonna have an update on our DOT goal for community ed, so you'll probably hear more about those programs. Uh, and school talk is also scheduled to be mailed to homes and should be arriving in the next week or so. With that, I'll end my report.
Thank you. We will now move to item three dot three, approval of the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, item four dot one, summer operations projects, and we would like to welcome up Darren Johnson, Executive Director of School Management.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the school board. I'm pleased to be with you this evening to provide a preview of the work that is scheduled to be completed during the summer of twenty twenty-three in our district. First, there are a few larger projects that, when completed, will provide two updated spaces at Irondale High School. The first is a renovation of eight classrooms utilized to serve students who receive special education support. This renovation will include new lighting, updated casework, HVAC unit improvements, new flooring, refreshed painting, new ceilings, the addition of breakout and calming spaces, as well as a bathroom update. Second is a remodel of Irondale's Career and College Center. The focus of this work for this project includes new lighting, casework, HVAC system, flooring, painting, new ceilings, the addition of a kitchenette space, and the creation of a new conference room. In addition to the projects that will be completed at Irondale High School this summer, numerous district-wide projects will also be completed. Touch-up painting and other smaller painting projects will be completed insider buildings, including areas like the classrooms, hallways, and other common spaces. Throughout the district, there will be the annual repair of concrete and asphalt to our parking lots and curbed surfaces. As needed, parking lots will be seal-coated and restripped. Tree replacement will occur in all locations where trees were cut down last year due to Emerald Ashbore disease. And finally, many exterior doors will be replaced, as well as the upgrading of many failing card readers. So these projects will certainly be appreciated by our district community when school resumes in the fall of twenty twenty-three. This completes my, my report for this evening. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Darren? No, thank you for the update.
Yeah, I, no questions, but I just, I, I want to thank Darren for being here tonight to give the update, but, um, lots happening over the summer, and I specifically want to call out Chris Fauquette, uh, and, and his team, the operations team, the custodians, um, are, are constantly working to maintain our, our facilities. And, and the work when we don't have students and they can really dig into some of those projects in the summer, uh, lots and lots happening. So just extend a, a thank you to Chris, his team, and, and all of our custodians for all the work they, they do in those summer projects as well. Thanks, Darren.
Thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
Next up, we have item four dot two, enrollment update, and I'd like to welcome Bernice Humnick, Executive Director of Administrative Services.
Thank you. This evening, um, we're here to have a report only of twenty-three, twenty-four enrollment update. Um, in December, Hazel Reinhardt provided an enrollment and housing study update. This information was used for the twenty-three, twenty-four year enrollment forecast. Key, um, components included the development process. In the development process, historical grade progression, migration, and survival rates, birth ratios, other educational choices, and an open enrollment information. Housing changes and student yield analysis was also included. Hazel reinforced the positive market share that Mounds View maintains. So in the packet is the, um, twenty-three, twenty-four enrollment update as of February twenty-eighth. And we'll continue to provide this, this update, these updates as we move forward. Any question?
I would, uh, I would offer, um, you know, Hazel said the in-migration that we get, you know, we're watching that. We're up even this year. Um, I mean, it's various grade by grade, but about forty students from October one. So we're still starting to see some of that in-migration, and one of the things, uh, I will let the board and the community know, we're watching closely, is our kindergarten numbers, right? Because, uh, if you remember, Hazel said if, if that number continues around, uh, eight hundred, that's, that's pretty stable. And that's, you know, kind of what we're looking for. As you look at what's projected, it's more than that because, uh, we always have, uh, more students that we will screen as they come through and, and, uh, work with them and their families about what choices, whether they're gonna send their kids to kindergarten or hold back. You remember she said, uh, expect a few red shirts, uh, showing up on our door, so, so we'll continue to watch that number as we, uh, prepare for next school year and see where that, that kindergarten marker is going to, to land for us moving forward. Thanks, Bernice.
Thank you, Bernice.
Thank you, Bernice.
Uh, we have item five dot one, an update on DOT goal, expand access to community education programs, youth and adult programming, and I'd like to welcome Carl Brown, Director of Community Education, and Sky Gillespie, Adult Education Coordinator. Welcome.
Thank you. Great. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us tonight. Tonight, we've got an update on, uh, really a lot of things that are happening in community education. It's a mix of an update from programs this year, and as Chris had mentioned, just a little bit of opportunity to preview our summer programs, which are always a big part of what we do in community education. For tonight, we're gonna talk about, uh, some of our adult education or adult basic education programs we have. Um, quite a bit about the wide range of enrichment programs we have, and also, um, highlight some areas in early childhood that we've been working on this year, and, and also some summer programs. Within those programs, we'll be talking about the school year programs, uh, summer day camps and enrichment programs, uh, summer band and orchestra, and then a big part of summer sports camps and clinics, um, partly to show what we've been doing, and I also know we have a lot of families that are always wondering what's coming, because this is the time of year when all that planning is happening and enrollment and registration kicks in. So, um, hopefully can provide that update and also let people know what, um, will be coming. Sky, you wanna?
So for adult education, um, it's slide shows up here, we have, uh, all the programming that we have for fall, spring of twenty twenty-three. Uh, before we get into that, I just want to talk about, uh, some of the, some of the numbers. Um, uh, during our COVID years, we were operating at about fifty percent, um, capacity, based on numbers previous to that. Uh, the good news is this year, uh, we're operating at roughly ninety percent, so we're back. So people are coming out and it's, the, the community is showing up and, and they're using our program, so we're very excited about that. Um, some of the courses that we offer, uh, we have morning and evenings, uh, G D diplomas, uh, classes for students who, who need to get that credential. Uh, we offer English, uh, E S L, English as a second language, uh, career pathways. This is our growing one, uh, where we offer different, uh, uh, trainings so our, our community can get out and, uh, have robust careers, uh, including C N A, para educator, and I T courses. And also in those career pathways, we're looking to partner with, uh, uh, organizations in the community to, to help us maybe set up internships and things like that. So we're trying to keep everything in-house. We also have citizenship classes, um, which, uh, we've revamped that, and it's, uh, doing well. Where we're, at one time, we were only helping students who could, who were, were at an advanced speaking level. But what we've quickly found out is, uh, helping students who, who are, are at lower levels, they still pass the task. So that was absolutely excellent to see. We've had three this year, and a couple of our lower level classes, they got their citizenship. So that's wonderful. Uh, uh, we do advanced conversations, uh, C D L trainers, that's another one where we're gonna partner with, with, uh,
Always forget the American Transportation.
American Transportation in Mounds View. We're gonna partner with them to, uh, to try to get some C D L drivers, bus drivers for us. Uh, that's, that's the main goal, first of all. And then, if Walmart needs a driver, they can have them too. Uh, and, uh, the, the, the next one that we'll, we'll jump onto, uh, right away is drivers of education. I, didn't I see that the governor's gonna sign that, or he said he's gonna sign it last night, or he's gonna sign it? So we're gonna jump right in the middle of that. We already had coursework set up. Uh, we, we've done it off and on for drivers' education, uh, just the written part, not the behind-the-wheel stuff. We're not, we're not gonna do that, but, but, uh, we, and we're ready for the anticipation of having the flood of students, English, uh, as a second language students who want to get their driver's test because it's gonna be available, so. We're already prepping for that as well. Uh, summer classes, that'll start in mid-June through mid-August, so we'll just keep the train going. Um, the school district, we, we kind of fall in line with them and do summer classes during the month of July, but we, we kind of do it on, uh, with June and August bookends as well, because we're kind of a little different, but we're all in the same family here. We also have a Pearson Testing Center. Um, we operate that, uh, Monday through Friday. Um, of course, people come in from, from all walks of life to get their certifications. Um, it's another, I actually, that's my, one of, one of my few, uh, sources of income, so we, we're quite proud of that, that they come in and test with us. Um, some of the, and with that, some of the common tests that are administered, uh, we do a lot of G D testing. We partner, uh, with the state of Minnesota and with our consortia, uh, to make sure our students get first dibs at that. But, uh, any student from anywhere can come into our building and, uh, take the G D test. We do I T co- uh, certifications, um, COMT, Microsoft, and so on, a lot of teachers. Uh, and what we've found is, uh, times like next week when, uh, uh, we're on spring break, we've opened up, uh, a few days, um, to, to, for testing, and it's full of teachers all over the state, because they can't, they, they try to get in when they can get in, so we've kind of found our niche with that as well. On off, off-school days, we need to be available because we can, um, uh, profit off of that. Uh, other ones, pharmacy technician, uh, para educator, uh, cert report, and, uh, just other Pearson view tests, uh, approved tests. And these are some of the, the odd ones that I've seen come through the door, Amazon, Amazon's not odd, but actual FBI agents come in and take their test. I thought that was incredible, so I made sure I put that one up there, and TSA. So, uh, yeah, so, uh, we've, uh, increased the, the, the testing capacity. We used to have eight stations, and, uh, uh, during, during COVID, we did get a grant from, from the federal government and the state that, that allowed us to do some improvements, so we took advantage of that and, and got four more stations added in. Uh, and, uh, and tech just came in, actually, we had to get more cameras. We didn't know that, but they actually came in today and took care of that, so we're, we're up and running, so we're very happy about that. So that's about all that, uh, that we have right now. Oh, I hand it back to Carl. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. A lot happening in adult education, and now we've moved to a little bit younger age with, uh, school age enrichment. Uh, programs we've had this year, um, pretty consistent with what we've done for years. We've got before and after-school programs. Uh, depending on the time of day, as far as start times with our elementaries, sometimes if it's our later start schools, we can run enrichment programs in the morning, which have been very appealing and helps, uh, parents have a little bit earlier start to the day, but then kids not have as late of a, um, evening. And then, uh, other schools will do a lot of after-school programming. Uh, we've also added some evening and weekend classes. Uh, sometimes we've had at our schools where we've had a challenge of, uh, reaching minimum enrollments in one particular school. So by having an evening class where we can be at a centralized location, it makes it easier to get a handful of people in each class, and then we can run more classes. Um, and we've started to offer a few weekend classes. Um, in some cases, usually they're Saturday morning or midday or something, just one day out of the weekend. They've been popular and just comments from, uh, people have taken them. It, it kind of lightens up the week, and so they can do some things they'd like to do and, and not be as pressured during the week. So, um, we try to offer a lot of different varieties of programs and opportunities for people's schedules and where they live across the district. Um, part of that, I also want to just say before I get too far in there, I just want to say thank you to all our buildings and our principals to have the opportunity for us to, in community education, all of the programs we run, run in partnership with all of our schools and our buildings and our custodians and office staff, really to help make that work. Um, it's a great, um, process in place, and it's something where it helps everything run smoothly. So I always want to, um, extend the thanks of all the work in our buildings. Um, our office can't do it alone, um, so it's something that's really important. Uh, other classes, though, that we've done, uh, you know, STEM classes have been pretty common, language has been pretty common. Uh, we've seen an increase in art, uh, classes. Uh, we've added a number of, uh, sport classes, really the experiential ones at younger ages, where they're not necessarily a, a club level or an association level, but it's something you can try out a sport and see if you like it. Um, we've got a lot of great opportunities in our community if, uh, kids try things out and want to go beyond that. We wouldn't typically cover that in community education, but we can help get people to the right spot if they want to continue. Uh, some of the new classes, uh, Rubik's Cube Club, it is back, and it is absolutely impressive to watch it, the speed at which not only the instructors, but kids can just crank through that. Um, for those of you that remember Rubik's Cubes a while ago,
Oh, yeah.
Um, they are basically the same, so, uh, that's really a, a fun one, and, uh, may bring back some frustration, at least in my mind of, uh, you know, how many sides you can get. Um, other ones that have been popular, we've partnered with some groups on youth bowling, so we have got a group, uh, where kids will go and bowl at Flarries on, on weekend afternoons, and, and that's been fun. Um, adding some art classes, middle school clay, um, different sports opportunities. Our middle school program that, uh, periodically we've, we've talked about our after-school program, uh, we were able to, um, maintain some of it during COVID, but what we had to, um, back off of, we didn't have, uh, uh, competition days. So typically, we'd have all three middle schools practice, and then we'd have some competition days where we'd have the schools meet up together. This year, they're back, which has been great. Uh, we just finished up basketball. We're now into swimming, and we're anticipating and hoping for a, uh, strong spring with track once the snow melts. Um, so those, those programs are, are doing really well, and it's, it's a nice opportunity for, um, kids to try out some of those sports. Uh, different language classes, I had mentioned Spanish, um, has been pretty popular. Um, we've also had an opportunity in community ed to work on some field trip support with some grant programs for, um, so far it's been Pine Wood, Sunnyside, and Pike Lake, uh, working with the Ordway on different opportunities for, uh, student groups. Another piece that we've added this year, which has been great, um, we've been working on this for a couple of years, but looking on different, uh, financial support opportunities for students. Uh, we've added in most of our programs when we can, uh, in educational benefits rate. So basically, what we've done is taken our, um, regular price rates and for students that qualify and are part of our educational benefits program, a starting point of online registration at fifty percent off that rate. Um, we've been able to do that through, uh, scholarship support through the Ralph Reader Food Shelf, through our community education scholarship fund, and then various local donors that help us in these programs. Um, so far, it's been successful, and I think we've had close to, gotta look at that, um, yeah, close to about, uh, five hundred students or so participating on those numbers. So it, it has shown to be very helpful. We always have additional self, scholarship, uh, support based on need. Um, that's something we can automate quite as well, so it usually involves a conversation with, uh, school support staff or our office. Um, but we try to make, uh, financial barriers as minimal as possible for families to protest, to participate. Let's see, the only, uh, piece I didn't add, a couple of our ones that are, have been going well, and actually tonight is our last night of it. Um, our after-school ski program, uh, we were able to operate that for the last couple of years. This year, we had about three hundred and fifty students. Um, at Wild Mountain, it's been a great program. Weather was a little bit weird this year. We had more rain than we were prepared for and a couple of cold nights, but it is winter and we don't know what to plan on. Um, and, um, yeah, a lot of, a lot of things happening in, in terms of the youth area. Um, kind of a new area, and we've been building this for a while, and we're, we're excited because there's been some new opportunities, really looking at adult enrichment. Um, Sky and I were just talking about how we have adult education and we have adult enrichment. It's probably something we need to Sky and I were just talking about how we have adult education and we have adult enrichment. It's probably something we need to better clarify in terms of what that means. Many of these things in terms of adult enrichment are special interest programs. We've done some estate planning, areas that people seem to appreciate help with. Wills, how to manage their funds, financial planning, not only college, retirement, having a baby, you know, those different stages in life. We try to have it be an educational component. People can make a decision if they want to have a relationship with someone as a professional after. But it really is the goal is that initial education and then, then we're done. Glass blowing has been popular, kind of fun. It's not onsite. We've worked with some local areas. We've found with our adult programs, it's a lot easier for people to travel to spaces. So identifying those places that would be fun opportunities that we can help vet and understand what the program would be and make it a good value for our residents. We've added those painting, cake decorating, done some conversational Spanish for people that want to travel to a different destination. And we've done some classes like extreme couponing. You know, so a lot of different varied things. Other ones that are new, we've been working with some partnerships with some of our local cities on day trips. One of our challenges, we don't have a great location for adult programs during the daytime during a school day to meet up and leave. So by having a community drop-off with New Brighton or Shoreview or whoever we would work with, we've been able to partner up and do some day trips to the Minnesota Landscape Arboretum, Taylor's Fault Boat Trips, City of Winona, different things like that. And I think that will continue to grow. We've got some community lunches. We've got one tomorrow, which is going to be nice. It's going to be in San Anthony, but it's something where years ago we used to do congregate dining. It's a little bit different than that. It's more of a community opportunity where people can just get together and have a low cost or free lunch. We've been able to get some donors and working with the different cities. And it's not a senior lunch and it's for adults 40 plus. So really it's open to, and I'm sure we would gladly take anyone younger. Another one that we had talked about building in and we actually have it is we've been jumping on the pickleball craze and really doing some opportunities there. We've done a learn to play classes over at Edgewood. We were able to purchase some portable nets. Most of our schools, when we've done our bigger gyms and striping, we've striped a pickleball court inlay on our basketball courts. So we're really situated to expand as needed, but we're also looking at summer opportunities to have outdoor courts. And that's the nice thing about portable courts is we can just have on our tennis courts, we can move a portable net, have people play and, you know, either have some instruction with or just have some open courts available while it's still pretty popular. So that one, I'm sure will continue to grow. Adding to the adult side of it is really looking at some of the multi-generational components. We've had pretty good luck and people have seemed to really like it. If you're familiar with retired meteorologist Mike Lynch, I can't remember what channel he was on.
CCO.
CCO. He does a program called Star Watch and brings a telescope out to one of our schools where we can do that. And also he has a Plan B. If it's cloudy, he'll, he'll give people a coupon to find one of his other nights and see the stars. Been very fun for people and he's super knowledgeable about constellations and stars and people have enjoyed that. We've also done a bingo program, which is a video bingo. So basically bingo, but music videos and other things, trying some of those things out. Family nights at Wild Mountain, really through the winter, we'll do skiing and tubing opportunities. And we also have some dates coming up with summer where the water park and go-karts and all those things. Families can get a discounted rate for participating. And then to close that out, it's really some different art opportunities with clay and art nights where grandparents and children or parents and kids can go and have an activity together. And we've got, we've done some and we're expanding some opportunities for movie nights out in our fields. One thing that we're hoping for is our turf fields are great because they don't have the same number of bugs. They are drier than a grass field. So hopefully when you watch a nine o'clock movie, it isn't as buggy as it might be, but we'll see. All right. And I will also add Erin Madison was going to join us tonight. My plan was not to cover this whole thing. She's unable to be here tonight. So I'm covering a lot of that content as well. Summer programs, Chris had mentioned that that is coming up soon. Our summer catalog is out online. So really it, for the most part, that catalog has the bulk of what we have. The nice thing about our programs is we can continue to add new opportunities online. So we are still building some that came in after the publication dates. So by the time registration opens, we'll even have more classes in there. But it's a really good look at what we're doing and what we'll have available for families. We've got day camps. These are ones that we've done for a number of years now. It will be at Turtle Lake Elementary. We're expanding our capacity. We, last year we were pretty tight. Even with COVID restrictions lessened up, we, we found the need to add some more classroom spaces. So this year we have spots for about 70, which is roughly about four classes worth of students because our ratios are about 15 students a class. We've revamped a traditional day camp that's called Summer Explorer. It's really, it's a half-day option for families so they can take a content-specific class and, and combine it with a, just a traditional day camp where kids can have fun and have activities. We're having smaller class sizes and trying to have more kind of a variety of activities. If you recall from other years, we have a lunch bunch opportunity. So it's just a supervised lunch program. So you can couple a morning opportunity with a afternoon. And for parents, they can have their kids under our supervision and programming all day. Or they don't have to. They can, you can come for a morning class or an afternoon class and decide how you want to do that. And then we are continuing with Field Trip Fridays. So throughout those day camp periods of which are eight weeks, we'll have eight Fridays that people can join in those Fridays if they want to. And really the field trips are something that you can participate in a program all week and then take the field trip. You can be in the program and not take the field trip, or you can just take the field trip. So it's really trying to be flexible and accommodating to all kinds of different needs by families. All right, some of the new and expanded pieces we're doing. We have been working hard to bring in some new vendors. We've got some great ones we've been working with for years and we want to continue. But of trying to expand, we're not just putting more of what we've always had. It's trying to build in some new vendors. Working with Northern Clay Center on some of their art and different projects they have. I had mentioned that before, the Minnesota Cube Communities, working with some classes they have. E2 Engineers, some more STEM opportunities. Dash Sports has been a provider that's helped with some of those introductory classes. And also we'll be offering some middle school programs this summer just for participation and more opportunities for kids to try out sports or just get involved with their peers and have some fun. Some new opportunities with Offsite, working with Buena Archery, it's in Little Canada, to offer some introductory archery classes and they have a shooting range there. So people can go there and have instruction and if they need to buy equipment, they can. Ninja Warrior Camps have been really fun so far where we've got a number in our area. All ages, they can work with kids and adults and have training facilities. And then some horse camps and a number of different pieces that you can experience. Multi-day camps or just a half-day learning about horses and understanding that. Last summer, we worked with Wilderness Inquiry for the first time in a while and we're continuing with a middle school and also adding a high school trip. It's basically at the set of pretty large canoes. You take down the Mississippi River and just have a great day and lunch. We're hoping that will be another good experience. Last year we had a blast and it wasn't even the greatest of weather. So if we have great weather, it'll be even better. This year we're bringing back, or bringing back the idea of a youth theater program. We're working with Matt Van Brugen, who we hired as our performance facilities manager. He's going to help us bring back a youth program for theater, which I think will be great. And that's been very popular. Details of that will be coming up in our catalog and more to come. And then we're continuing a partnership with Wells Fargo on a data science and artificial intelligence camp. It's been a great experience for some of our high school students. And last year we filled the computer lab at Miles View High School and had a great experience with a lot of their, not only the Wells Fargo staff, but they brought in experts in the field, learning about all kinds of computer-related things. All right, early childhood. So we've been offering our preschool programs, our preschool threes, our pre-K4 classes. We are running strong this school year. We have a breadth of early childhood family ed classes that have been going all school year. Registration for next year is ongoing. Right now it is open. We have limited space available. So if people are interested in signing up with us, I would always encourage people to do that sooner than later and looking at what available classes we have. And we are also expanding the number of summer programs we have. These are shorter, shorter periods, really coming through June 19th through July 20th are kind of the bookended events. And we've got 10 offerings and for four-day camps. So a lot of different opportunities for really just skill-based or themes for parents and families and kids to have a fun time playing. And then we're also adding a gearing up for preschool camp, a couple of different sessions of AM and PM for parents that may not be sure what preschool looks like and want to give their children a little bit of a jumpstart and an experience in our building. So we're really excited about those and those will be a great opportunity this summer. All right, summer music. That has also been a big program. We have our summer beginning and advanced band that will be starting. The summer band and orchestra dates are the same. They kind of mirror our summer school program, but July 10th through August 3rd. And we have our beginning band is for our students entering grade five. These are optional programs, but a lot of families like to do that in the summer if they want to have their students start. And we also have middle school programs for an introduction if students haven't played in elementary or they want a advanced opportunity for students that have already played a middle school opportunity. And then we conclude, almost conclude as a summer concert. So it's a big summer concert at the end of the season at Irondale High School on August 3rd at 6:30 PM. And last year was the first year that they did a big Valley Fair performance trip where the students who attend that trip will play at Valley Fair or do a performance and then spend the rest of the day having fun on rides and hanging out with their friends. So that will be really the end of that season in summer band on August 4th. Registration for those band and orchestra classes is, it's online in our community ed program, but the music teachers at elementary and middle school buildings are trying to help out families by introductory sessions. So if you're not sure what you want or what instrument, they will help families decide. For those who just want to sign up, if they already have a student who plays, they can sign up online and be ready to go. Onto orchestra. Orchestra, a little bit different age range. Beginning orchestra is at grade four is the entering point. So students that are entering grade four can start up. And then we have fifth grade, sixth grade, summer orchestra, some middle school opportunities and an end of season concert on August 2nd. So Irondale as well, but the day before will be the final concert there. And we've got some middle school opportunities that are kind of the same timelines of what we're looking at. Shorter sessions, but we do have a new one that is a symphony orchestra camp where one of our orchestra teachers will be providing a new opportunity. So should be a good opportunity for middle school and entering high school students to have a different chance to play or maybe something different than they're used to in the summer program. All right, sports camps and clinics. Lots of things with that coming up. We've got a wide range of things with both Irondale and Miles View, our traditional high school programs. Many opportunities for current high school students to have a skill-building or other opportunities within their sport levels. A number of them are running through community education. So that registration will be either available or ongoing as information becomes available. A lot of the high school programs are really word of mouth. Our coaches and teams do a great job of knowing who their athletes are and players. And so they will help as well as all the other notifications we have. Middle school sports, I had mentioned that we have some new opportunities for students to sign up. Those are in the summer catalog and those will be available online. And we're adding some things where this year we are, we've added a little tech sport. So really for the younger ones. And just opportunities where we heard a lot of feedback is that people see things for all ages and they say, well, I can't, I have something for our younger kids and great question. So trying to add in those things for different things. I'm sure that'll be not only a fun program for kids, but probably pretty fun to watch. All right, almost done. Multi-generational and family opportunities. A number of things we're trying to look at is those opportunities. I had mentioned some of the school year enrichment programs when we're looking at summer. A family camp, working with the Wilderness Inquiry on some programs as well as we're also working with Voyager Outward Bound with some students. We've got a family camp that's an intro to camping at Fort Silling State Park. Really it's a supported trip that really all you have to do is have an interest and be willing to sign up and they will provide the gear and help you do that. It's an overnight. It's, you start in the afternoon and are finished shortly after breakfast. So fairly small time investment for families that want to try things out. We've got a new group that we're working with called School of Fish. So we have a professional fisherman who is doing things and they've got a program that will teach people, teach kids and adults how to fish. And for kids, part of the program is you can get a fishing rod part of it. So not only can you learn how to do it, but you can have the tools necessary to do that. I had mentioned the other parts with family movie nights and family days at Wild Mountain. The only one I didn't talk about is we have a paranormal investigations, not only 101, but we also have 102. So if you try out the first one and feel like you need more, there will be an opportunity to build those paranormal investigation skills. So we'll see how that one goes. I think it should be fun. We heard some good feedback from other districts that have tried it out. All right. So the last part, Chris had mentioned this. Thank you always on the, on the information with registration dates because I know those are important. Some classes do fill up fairly early. So it's always, if you're interested, try to be there. We have a lot of opportunities, but sometimes when things fill up, we do have a chance of adding another section, but not always. It's kind of depends on who is teaching the class and their availability. But another piece, last year at Turtle Lake, we did a summer expo. This year we're doing another one. It's going to be at Chippewa on March 25th from one to four. We're trying to expand it just beyond, even beyond our summer programs of other community components where we'd have that. I've shared many times before that our, we're lucky in our community. There are tons of opportunities for students in our district. We offer a lot of ones and I think we offer some great ones. We also have a lot of other providers that do an outstanding job with that. And so opportunities for our families, if what we have doesn't fit for them, we'd love to help them find something that is good for them and their family in those times. So free of charge, people are welcome to have that. And we're still getting some of our community providers and groups to sign on for that. Online catalogs there, print catalog will be coming. That one, just a reminder, that does go to all of our district residents. We'll also have the additional offerings online and we will be sending out emails, Peachjar updates, Facebook, trying to provide a lot of different ways of how to get that information out. That is it. Thank you very much for extensive. If you have questions, please, I'd be happy to help.
Yeah. Does anyone have any questions for Carl or Sky?
I don't have any questions, but I just, just a comment. I mean, I'm always extremely impressed by the, the amount of options, right? I mean, it's, it's almost like overwhelming, but it's just, it's wonderful because we have something for everyone, right? No matter what your interests are, no matter what you're into. I mean, my gosh, I mean, runs the gamut. So I just again, want to commend you guys for having those options. And it always seems like every time you're in front of us presenting, you're adding options, right? And you're listening to the feedback. So I just wanted to just applaud you and your team for that. And I'll be sure to pass on to our colleague Sandra about the pickleball. She would be so disappointed. That was the only reason we had, I had to lean over and say, hey. Sandra is a big pickleball player. So go Sandra. We'll make sure we get you that memo.
Yep.
But, but no, thank you so much for the work you guys do.
Thank you. Lots of great opportunities. Thanks for coming.
Thanks, everyone.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, next up, item 5.2 Updates. Jim, AMSD Legislative?
Oh, things are busy at the legislature. I'll just be quick. A lot of funding debates, plenty of policy debates. The rubber is going to start hitting the road because you have deadlines coming up. Though a lot of things are going to be rolled into big omnibus bills, but the reality is funding targets will probably be set by April 1. They waited for last week's forecast. That was fairly positive. So the Senate and the House will get funding targets for every area of education, that type of thing. So we'll have a little better sense of actually where things are and where things are going. And just to note, this morning at the Senate Education Committee, our former colleague and school board member, Amy Jones testified via Zoom about the efforts that Miles View Public Schools did towards mental health. So that was good to see and and her presentation was very impressive. So that's that.
Thank you, Jim. Now we'll move on to item 6.1, School Board Member Reports. Does anyone have anything to share?
I wanted to commend the students at both high schools for their Black History Month event. For Black History Month, both BSUs got together and planned an event at Irondale. I think it was just great to see the students showcasing their efforts and was great to see. I also had the chance, I didn't even think about this until I just looked at it, but I was in every middle school in the last couple of weeks. So I apparently did my middle school rounds. But both Highview and Edgewood had great history fairs. It was really fun. The staff there invited any of us who were available to judge. And that was a really fun event and I just commend those teachers for taking the extra effort to really bring history to life for their students and let their students find a topic that they wanted to research more. And then I was able to go to the play at Chippewa. So the Little Mermaid production was very well done and commendations to both Leah and Emma Hoya, the directors for that. It was really fun to be a part.
Nice. Anyone else?
Well, I was excited to attend our first session, our first, first part of our, our training for district equity training last week at our work session. So that was really exciting to hear the content that's been built by our administration, the teachers and so many individuals who really work collaboratively to put that training together. So it was super engaging. I felt like the tools were very easy to understand and use to have some tough conversations, right, around race, equity and other topics that aren't very, that aren't always easy to talk about. So I applaud those folks who really worked hard to put that together. And like I said, it was just really good for us to be able to go through that training and start learning. And like I said, it was just really good for us to be able to, to go through that training and, and start learning what everyone in the district is using, uh, to talk about equity. So I'm certainly proud to be part of a district that, that supports diversity, equity and inclusion. So, um, and then my second thing is I just want to wish all of our students and teachers and staff a really great spring break. So safe travels to those of you traveling and enjoy your time off. That's all I've got.
Jim, do you have anything?
Well, I also did the history fair and that was fabulous. And, um, I got to go to Moundsview hockey game following, um, Irondale Alpine and, um, Moundsview wrestling and all sorts of stuff online. It's been, uh, a very, very busy time and I think everybody's headed to a well-deserved rest. So, as Yolanda said, safe travels to all.
Yes. Um, I also got to participate in Edgewood, um, Edgewood's, uh, history fair, which was super fun, um, to see how creative they did on their research projects and so forth. And then I also had the opportunity, um, to attend the Highview eighth grade, um, middle school band. Um, they played at the Minneapolis Convention Center. And what was so great, um, is this class stayed with it through COVID. And it was amazing because they had the instruction via Zoom, um, or, um, Google meets or whatever they, they, the platform was. It was just great to see that and they sounded absolutely, um, amazing. So I'd like to thank Phil Erickson and, um, Eric Johnson, um, to, uh, for inviting, um, me to that, so.
I forgot I got to hear Moundsview High School. I went the next day, I wasn't able to go. So huge honor to two of our bands to be featured. That's really rare. Um, actually when Bill Suha got the letter, he was like, is this a mistake? Was this supposed to go to Phil? So, um, and again, same with that group of students. It's a very young group of students. There's a very few seniors in the Moundsview High School band right now. And, um, for Mr. Suha to, um, to go over there and continue with those students and continue building that program was really fun to see. Um, and, uh, it was just great to see, um, the, the support for Moundsview school music in that room.
Agreed. Any other updates? Anything else to come before the board? All right, thank you, everyone. Meeting is adjourned.